Calling to order the Monday, March 19th, 2018, regular meeting of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Hannon.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
And Mayor Turbrack.
Here. First order of business tonight is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman with support from Mayor Pro Tem Baker. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hannon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. Agenda has been approved. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us today is Rabbi Daalen.
Please pray with me in whatever way you are comfortable. Mishabbirah, chavateenu, avot ve'imohtenu, our God and the God of our ancestors. We gather here tonight as community, as families, as brothers and sisters, parents and children, as present and future. We ask not for providence or miracle, only wisdom, justice, kindness, and compassion, that the citizens of this beautiful city of Berkeley, its council and decision-makers may continue to walk forward with the purpose of a better tomorrow shaped by the needs of a better today. May all of us remember the simple yet infinitely complicated truth, that life is with people, that the struggles of the individual are the struggles of us all, and likewise, that the joy and celebration of the I is the joy and the celebration of the we. Together in commitment, in trust, in hope, may this city, this municipal family, be blessed with peace, with growth, and with understanding, now and always, and let us say together, amen.
Let's turn the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Rabbi. We have now come to the citizens' comments portion of our meeting, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please sign your name on the sheet provided on the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item while it is being presented. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Evening, Your Honor, Councilmember, City Manager. My name is Douglas Steeds. Proud resident of the City of Berkeley for 42 years. Would like to invite the citizens of Berkeley to donate their time to any of the organizations that we have within the city, the Beautification Committee, the Parade Committee. There are a lot of different committees out there to help along Berkeley. Okay? Thank you.
Representative is with us today. Mr. Representative, would you like to speak to the residents?
Good evening, everyone. Coming in to say hello, update you on a few things, and also here to congratulate someone who's sitting behind me, who might be sitting there soon enough, and also Ross, Councilman Gavin. I don't know that I've been here since you've actually been sworn in, so congrats to you as well.
Thank you.
And we have two amazing people that are going to be serving the residents of Berkeley. I know them both very well, and I know they're going to do a great job and both really care about the community. And I also want to thank everyone that put their name in the hat to run. It's a thankless job, I can tell you that. It's a lot of work and a lot of time, but it's so important and, you know, continue moving the city forward. So I appreciate you all stepping up for that. Just wanted to just come and talk about a couple of events upcoming that I have. We have our community conversations that we host, usually two a month, two usually one in the afternoon or morning and one in the evening, so that if people work during the day, they can come at night or vice versa. And we rotate again. There are seven different communities in the 27th House District, so we rotate every month. And so we've had, we already had one in Hazel Park, in Huntington Woods, in Ferndale, in Oak Park. So then we have coming up in April, April 16th, which is a Monday, at 2:00 PM in Royal Oak Township, and then Tuesday, the 17th, 6:30 PM here in Berkeley at the library. So that's Tuesday, April 17th, 6:30 PM at the Berkeley Library, and then Monday, May 14th, 10:00 AM at the Pleasant Ridge Community Center. And again, invite any and every resident that wants to come out, and people who don't live in the district. It's open to anyone. It's usually a good discussion. It's different every single time because it depends who attends, but I'll give a brief update as to what's going on in Lansing, and that's where people can ask questions or raise concerns or make suggestions. It's usually a good discussion, so I appreciate when people show up. We've actually had some really good turnouts recently and some really fruitful discussions. So want to remind people about that, and then you don't have to come to one of those if you want to reach out to me. Feel free to email me or call me. It's robertwittenberg@house.mi.gov is my email, and you can call 517-373-0478, and that's how you can get ahold of me if you ever have any questions or concerns. And then also want to let people know about an upcoming town hall that we're hosting here in Berkeley, actually, at the high school in the Collaborative Center. It will be Wednesday, March 28th, so coming up soon. Doors open at 6:00. Program starts at 6:30. It's a tax town hall and talking about how the federal tax changes will impact everybody. So you can come out. And here we have Congressman Levin will actually be speaking, and then we have panelists, three different panelists that will be there. One is a professor from the University of Michigan at the Ford School of Public Policy, and then two, one's a legislative coordinator, one's a policy analyst from the Michigan League for Public Policy, which is an organization that Gilda Jacobs, a lot of people know Gilda from this area. Gilda is the president of the Michigan League for Public Policy, so a couple of people from that organization that study and know this topic very well. So that's the town hall we're hosting on March 28th, and again, want to invite anyone and everyone that wants to join us to come on out and see, you know, how the tax changes affect you. And we'll have question and answer portion as well if people have specific questions. So those are the events going on. As far as what's going on in Lansing, I won't take up too much time. It is budget season, and so the governor came out with his budget proposal and then, you know, go through the appropriations process. I don't sit on an appropriations committee, so I will not be there during the negotiation portion of it, but obviously keeping tabs of what's going on and talking to my colleagues that do serve on appropriations. I won't actually get to vote on the budget until it gets to the House floor. As I've been telling everyone, I will continue to try to fight for our local communities. We know you guys have been cut and cut and cut for years and are expected to do more with less with unfunded mandates that are pushed on you. So, and I know this group here, you're all, you don't hesitate to reach out to me, and I appreciate that because I need to know where people stand on the issue. So I appreciate you being in good communication with me. So, you know, I'll be fighting for you there, also for our schools, making sure, you know, our schools are funded properly or don't get cut. So we'll be working hard for that. So that's the big issue. There are a couple of other things in the news. I won't talk too much about it, but I, you know, with after the shooting in Florida, you know, I started our Gun Violence Prevention Caucus here in Michigan in 2016, and I'm the chair of the caucus, and so there are a lot of things that we're working on, sensible, common sense solutions that don't take someone's Second Amendment right away from them, but just make sure that guns aren't getting into the wrong hands and that if someone isn't qualified to have a weapon, that there's some kind of recourse if they're dangerous themselves or others, that we're able to temporarily seize the weapon from them. It's the bill that I actually introduced last year, which is called the Extremist Protection Order. In some states, they're calling them red flag bills, and you're starting to see a lot of people, you know, getting on board with this. Even our governor has come out to say this is something he'd be supportive of at a federal level. I think Marco Rubio is actually working on something similar to this. So we're kind of bringing people together on this issue. So that's something I'll be working on in Lansing, and I commend all the students I know here in the Berkeley School District. They had their voices heard, and I spoke at NORP for the day of action when they walked out. So it's an interesting time, to say the least, so, but, you know, I'm in Lansing fighting, that's for sure. So with that, I don't want to take too much time. I just wanted to let people know about the upcoming events, give you a little brief update of what's going on. But again, thank you all for what you do. I don't know if you have any questions for me or...
Well, luckily for you, I think we're going to probably see you over the next couple of days, at least for a little bit during the Capitol Conference.
Yep.
So we will certainly have an opportunity. Does anybody have any pressing questions right now with the representative?
And I'll see you, I know there's the breakfast Wednesday morning. Is everyone, is everyone going to be attending?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Whole squad.
Yeah. Well, you know, you know how to reach me. My office is your office if you guys need to come on in, but I know it'll be, it'll be important for you guys to be there and helpful. I know it's usually a good conference to be a part of, so I look forward to seeing you there. Thank you all.
Thank you, Robert. Seeing nobody else coming to the microphone, we will move on to our business of the day. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on today's consent agenda?
Approve of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 37th City Council meeting on Monday, March 5th, 2018, and warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1323 and warrant number 1324.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman. Support. Support from Councilmember Hannon. Any discussion, corrections, or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to tonight's regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no recognitions or presentations, we will move on to agenda item number two. Please read item number two.
Oath of office, oath of office to the newly appointed Councilmember Bridget Dean.
Do I need to take a motion for that, or can you just take it away?
I can't believe it.
Go right ahead.
Stay here. Okay. And I'm going to have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bridget Dean.
I, Bridget Dean.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly, oh, sorry.
Having been duly appointed as a council member of the City of Berkeley.
Having been duly appointed as a council member of the City of Berkeley.
Do hereby solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do hereby solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter and ordinances of the City of Berkeley.
The Charter and ordinances of the City of Berkeley.
And that I will perform the duties of my office to the best of my ability.
And I will perform the duties of my office to the best of my ability. Thanks so much.
Okay. Pretty good? Happy? Sticking around? Okay. All right.
It's a lot better than my family, I'll tell you that.
We haven't gotten all the way in yet. There's still, there's still time to sneak out. Okay. Well, thank you for being here, certainly. With that, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M1718, matter of approving appointments to various boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M1718?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Baker with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are a couple of items in front of you here today, two to the Historical Society. Mr. Dale Carlson has applied for a position with the term expiring in July 1st, 2021. David Stewart has also applied for a position expiring in 2021. I have a note here that both would have liked to have been here, but one had to work and one is actually out of state traveling right now, but they're both enthusiastically putting forth their name. The other two, the Tree Board, Mr. Kathleen Carles and Ms. Kim Wilt, apologize if I got either one of those names incorrect. Both of them likewise are enthusiastically asking to be appointed to the board. You had an item passed out before you for an applicant to our Communications Committee. We've had a lot of discussions about this body over the last couple of months. Councilmember Stedman is the liaison of that board, both Mayor Pro Tem Baker as well as Councilmember Hannon, has expressed interest in rejuvenating this board as an asset to the community, to help us sort of communicate and refine our messaging and improve our engagement between the city's administration, the elected and appointed officials, and the residents at large. A good way to kick that off would, of course, to be staffing that committee. It's had a separate purpose over its, throughout its history, but if we start to renew that body, give them a better mission statement, and to, again, reutilize these assets, it's, this is a good starting place tonight. So that is the item that was placed out before you. So there's also a request to appoint Ms. Natalie Price to the Communications Board, as well as solicit additional applications to that position.
And on the Communications Board, we have one current member still.
Yes.
Technically, that a term has not expired yet. If we appoint one, that leaves three vacancies that we need to fill on that board.
Correct.
So that we can get that fully staffed, so that we can begin, as you mentioned, going through the new mission vision and what that board is going to be able to provide the city. Councilmember Stedman?
Just for your information, we haven't finalized the time or the date yet, but it will either be late this Friday or sometime next week, a meeting with Jay Grossman, so that we can look at what we need to go going, do going forward.
Okay. Excellent. So, I mean, Communications Committee will be revived and renewed with a new, a new mission to more accurately fit the way that we communicate between the residents and the community. So we are very excited for that, and we are making our first appointment to that new board this evening. Is there any other discussion from council on the other members, certainly all qualified and all excited to volunteer their time for the city? Councilmember Hannon?
Yes, I spoke to all four, and yes, they all seem ready to go and ready, willing, able, and I support them enthusiastically.
Excellent. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. As the liaison to Historical Committee, I too spoke with the candidates for that board, and they're very excellent talents, and glad to welcome them aboard.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M1718?
Hannon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Gavin?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M1818, approve, matter of approving Berkeley Days 2018 event beginning Wednesday, May 16th, 2018, at 7:00 PM, and ends on Sunday, May 20th, 2018, at 4:30 PM. Located at the Berkeley Community Center, 2400 Robina. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates.
Is there a motion to approve M1818?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgartner.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. In your packet, you've got a completed application. It's been reviewed by our Public Safety, our Public Works, as well as our Billing Department. It offers a wonderful lineup of events, but a paper can only do so much, so I invite the Chair of that association to discuss Berkeley Days.
Good evening. I'm Denise Brainerd. I am the chairperson for Berkeley Days, and we are adding and making everything bigger and better like we try to do every year. This year, our race, it's the 40th anniversary of our 10K, 5K, 1-mile race, and that is going to take place on May 2nd, or I'm sorry, May 12th, not May 2nd, May 12th. Don't show up on May 2nd. But it's, it's going to be a fantastic event. I know that the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society has been working very hard. We actually are going to have some special guests that were involved in the very first race that are going to be there for the 40th anniversary. It's, it's going to be a great, exciting time. We are adding a couple of events. I know that the Helping Hands for H group came and talked to you and let you guys know that they were here and in Berkeley. They have decided that they are trying to put together a kids' cake decorating competition. So they're working on the details. It is so awesome to see my eight-year-old, you know, my third grader who is chairing the advertising committee and sits at the head of the table and calls on people to make motions. This whole for H thing is fantastic. But they are putting together a cake decorating competition. It'll be cakes and cupcakes. There will be, we'll have judges that will judge the different, the decorating, the techniques, the abilities. We're going to split it up by age, so it's not like there's a kindergartner competing with a, with a senior. But there will also be a people's choice category. So we will, there will be more details for that on the Berkeley Days website. We're also, we've got Family Game Night, which is the Berkeley Parks and Friends of Parks and Rec schedules that. The Steelers have approached me about adding fowling, so that may be another new event that we're going to have this year. And then, of course, we've got the softball game on Wednesday night. So for those of you that are new on council, it is a softball game that, between the dad's club and the mom's club and the city employees. So it's lots of fun.
Not for us.
It's fun for us to watch.
Yes.
It's a lot of fun to watch, but that, that is always a lot of fun. And then everything starts up. The Midway starts on the 17th, on that Thursday, and we will have the Taste of Berkeley, which is always well-attended and just so beneficial to Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance. The proceeds from that event send so many kids to camp. So Friday, we'll also, the craft show will start up. That is also going to be bigger and better. We have been working on that. We've been getting crafters. We've had a lot of vendors and people that have been contacting us because they've heard through word of mouth from other crafters that have been there how wonderful our show is. So the craft show is going to be even bigger. We've got entertainment lined up for the Beer Arena. We will have karaoke on Friday night. There might be some dodgeball karaoke going on on Friday night as well. It's fun to just watch, but nobody gets hurt in the throwing of the dodgeballs, but it just adds a new twist. Speaking of, the Berkeley Junior Women's Club is also adding an event to that Friday night. The name is still undecided, but we're borrowing it from an event that happens at the Sugar Festival called Lushes with Brushes, and it's going to be a painting, painting event. It'll be in the Beer Arena, and it's where you have somebody, for those like me with no artistic ability at all, you've got somebody telling you how to paint a picture, and it turns out looking pretty cool. So they're going to be adding that on Friday night. Again, there will be more details on the website for Berkeley Days. Other than that, a lot of the events are, you know, the same things that everybody expects to have every year. We're going to have the Midway, we're going to have the Craft Show, we're going to have pony rides, we're going to have the Dunk Tank like we had last year. So we've already had a few people sign up. I'm not sure, Mayor, if you got in there to, if you signed up yet, but...
I just called out on Facebook today.
You were.
Yes. It was affirmative.
So we've got, we've got several groups. What we're doing this year, different than last year, is the community service groups can sign up for a one-hour spot, and then what we're doing is we're splitting the proceeds with those groups. Last, and it's, it is $2 a ball, three for $5, or we've got the $20 nuclear option where you just get to hit the plunger. There's no ball throwing involved. So depending on your ability to heckle the people who are throwing balls, there was one group last year that made $230 in 30 minutes. Mainly because he was able to heckle the people who were throwing until they got mad and hit the plunger, and then he made them pay $20. So there's an opportunity for the groups to make some money at this event, and it's just a lot of fun. So we encourage, if there are any community service groups that want to step up, get somebody involved, sign up for a spot. If somebody doesn't want to represent a group, just wants to sign up, and, you know, Berkeley Days can then split that money among all the different groups that participate. We will have the horseshoe tournament. I know you were waiting for that.
I was.
I know. I know you were.
That's the only thing we win.
So, yes, we have started practicing and training. Again, we're, we're working on that.
We have to.
So we are looking forward to that event. That will be Friday night. Citizen of the Year, Humanitarian of the Year, those applications are going to be on our website as well. We are also adding a bike parade this year. Berkeley Days used to have a bike parade. You can see through the Historical Society, they've posted some pictures of past years. So this year, we're going to have another, we're going to try to bring back that bike parade. The kids are welcome to decorate their bikes or wagons. It's going to start at Angel and end at the, at Berkeley Days. So that's going to be the Saturday, May 20th. It'll start, we're talking around 9:00 in the morning, and it'll end up at Berkeley Days where everybody can stop and have pancakes and then go out and buy their wristbands and get on the rides. And I will be happy to answer any questions. The wristbands this year, they're $18 on Thursday, Friday, and Sunday. It's $23 on Saturday, and they're good all day. The Skurbeck Carnival will be here. They're really a wonderful group, and we do get a portion of the proceeds from the carnival. What Berkeley Days was originally set up in 1926, the first Berkeley Days was set up to celebrate the opening of Coolidge, but it is, the community service groups come together. It's a fundraising opportunity for all the community service groups. We've got about 25 different groups that currently receive the proceeds. We end up distributing maybe up to $25,000 if you count some of the other events that also happened during that timeframe. So I'm happy to answer any questions. There are, I believe the insurance certificates are the only things that we still need to get to show you. I promise you will have those before any event happens.
I trust that we will. Thank you. Thank you, Denise, again. We may joke about a couple of things. It's all in good fun. I do, I would suggest that if we are playing softball this year, that we remove the fences so that they don't hit as many home runs. Hopefully, we just play deeper. We just play, if we play deep enough, we can probably catch one, as opposed to them just trotting around all of the time. That's actually serious. I would really hope we get rid of those fences.
I can talk to Dad's club.
Thank you. Thank you. I will do that as well. Other than that, we know that there is a ton that goes into this. The committee, you, all of the organizations that come together to be a part of this event, certainly tremendous. One thing I did not hear you mention yet was anything about the weather. Do you know what the weather will be like?
It is going to be 75 and sunny.
Thank you. Perfect.
One more question, just because I'm asked this probably three or four times a week, and I, to the point where I came in and talked to Matt last week. We are going to be able to use the ice rink, right? That's, yes, the ice rink is going to, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Are there any comments, questions from council? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. One of the things I didn't see is, on here, we like to have a site plan to show where things are going to be laid out. I didn't see one attached here. Do you have a site plan? Because I take that and we use that when the development of the emergency plant...
It's going to be the same setup as we've had in past years.
Okay. Nothing's changed.
Nothing. I've got everything fit. It's like a giant Tetris game, fitting things in there. So as of right now, it's all going to be in the exact same spot, but I will, I will get a new site plan if anything changes.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Everybody's just very excited, eager. We have three new members of our lineup, so...
Do they know about the horseshoes? Have you ever played horseshoes? Have you ever played horseshoes?
Look, I'm focused much more on softball right now. We'll get to horseshoes.
The horseshoe tournament is, it's Friday night. We try not to play right next to the fence because sometimes there are these wild horseshoes that might go over the fence.
Only one group usually throws wild horseshoes.
The what?
Only one group typically throws the wild horseshoes.
Yeah.
I was talking about Phil. He's no longer here.
Well, and I'm usually playing him.
Oh, I know. Don't worry.
It's easier now that we've taken off the horses first, and so, just so you know.
Yeah, it makes it a lot easier.
Yeah, so you guys will be playing softball and horseshoes, if you did not know. That is a thing.
It's not too late.
We really don't have a lot of choice. You'll be ready. It's exciting.
It's fun.
No, it is, it is a great time.
There's a lot of laughing.
Yes, typically coming from the audience. Yeah, the other dugout in the audience. I would suggest you just don't want to strike out. We have had at least one officer who did that a couple of times, so we're going to try not to do that. Anything else? We are certainly all excited for Berkeley Days. Thank you for all the work that you do for this, Denise. We certainly do appreciate it.
And thank you for the support.
Well, you don't have it yet, but let's see. Ms. Blanchard, would you please call the roll?
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrant?
Yes.
Now, thank you for the support.
You're welcome. Ms. Blanchard, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Resolution Number R0918, matter of authorizing the Parks and Recreation Department to apply for the 2018 Land and Water Conservation Grant for Park Improvements at Oxford Merchant's Park.
Is there a motion to approve R0918?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Dean.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just give a quick introduction and turn it over to our director. This is the first of two applications that, for, up for council consideration this evening, both of which will utilize a matching grant, the details of which are very articulately outlined in the memo you have included in your packet, as well as the attached resolution also details that item as well. But, our director is very knowledgeable in this topic.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. So, I'm going to walk you through, I think, for those who may be new or people who are just hearing about this for the first time, I'm going to give a little bit of the backstory of how we got to tonight. I appeared before you last year asking for a matching grant for the Michigan National Resources Trust Fund Grant, the MNRTF, which you will see right after this grant. We ended up applying for that grant after the city purchased the property known as Oxford Merchant's. It's behind Merchant's Ballfields and behind the homes that are on Oakshire. The city purchased that property in 2014 from the school district. They then set money out to do a park plan. We hired a company by the name of Land and Landscape. They're actually now called Native, Native Edge. They've renamed themselves. They came in and did a park plan. We had several park planning meetings, open meetings, both in the evening and during the day. We also had a survey that went out. At the same time, we were actually going through our five-year master, Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Both those things helped to identify the components that we wanted to go for in this grant, in this first step. Last year, I appeared before you asking for funds for restrooms in the park. We don't have any parks with the exception of community where there's ballfields that have restrooms. We also identified a splash pad because a water feature was one of the main things that we heard people wanted in the city from both our five-year plan and from also the park planning process with Land and Landscape. I then had to come back to you a couple of months later and add in money, which we had identified in our capital improvement plan for sidewalks because it had to be part of the grant in order for us to even be eligible. We found out in December of this year that we came up five points short of receiving the MNRTF. Scores within 335 or higher plus priority projects were funded for development. We had a score of 330, along with a number of other communities, and then far less scores. I often wonder if it's better to just miss it or to miss it by a lot. Regardless, I then spoke with our grant coordinator, who I spoke to often during the process, and one of the things that she recommended in going through the process this year was to again, apply for the MNRTF. We can probably squeeze maybe 10 to 20 other points that we've identified. There aren't a lot more points that we can get out of that grant because it does really specialize with trails and waterways and things that we don't have, but we still score fairly high because we are considered an urban community. But, one of the other things that she did suggest was to apply for the grant, which you're seeing before you in this resolution now, is the Land Water Conservation Fund Grant. The reason we did not apply for this last year and do a dual application is because last year, the match for the land water was much lower. You could only ask for $150,000. That match has been increased this year to 300. We're asking for $180,000 out of both grants. We will not fund both grants, and even if you get one, you can always say no, but I have been assured we're not going to get both. So, basically, what it asks of the city is that we show that we have $360,000 for the total project cost of which the different elements are identified, and then we show a revenue of $180,000 coming back. We did it in our budget this year. We'll do it in our budget next year. That's what got us to this point. We had an open meeting last year at one of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meetings in order to apply for the grant. We also had an open meeting this month for the same process, to get comments, to get feedback. We've identified the same three components that we're asking for. We have a total park plan that we'll be developing over the next five years, but at this point, this leads us to here, and that's why we're going for the dual applications.
Thank you. Questions from council? Very concise and detailed. Councilmember Henan.
Do we have money budgeted for the long-term maintenance and just upkeep of the property?
Sure. So, this question obviously comes up, as it should. One of the things that I like to tell people is, maintenance, maintenance is always a little bit variable. We don't always know what things are going to cost us, but we know rough estimates based on what other communities of similar-sized splash pads and similar-sized restrooms are going to cost. So, for restrooms, we can know kind of what those utilities are going to be. Roughly, we're looking at restrooms that are going to be opened from April 1st to November 1st, which is pretty traditional. Roughly, those utility costs will be anywhere from $3,500 to $5,000 extra a year in our utility cost. We'll also need a little bit extra in terms of supplies, but beyond that, those maintenance costs will be on like a 10-year cycle of where you'll need to repaint, and you'll need to fix things, and the same sort of thing with a splash pad. The reason why so many communities have gone from pools to splash pads is because the maintenance cost is a lot lower. You'll have valves that need to be fixed. It will have to be winterized every year. You'll have painting that will need to be redone every seven to 10 years. So, what will happen is, just like in our other plans for our facilities, for the, our structures, we plan ahead every 10 years or so, sometimes less if it needs to be. We'll put in about $5,000 to $10,000 for those seven to 10-year fixes, and as I mentioned to you earlier, every year, we'll probably add a couple thousand for meetings just because that's a little bit unknown. One thing that I really want to nail down, that unfortunately, we can't until we have a final design, is that water cost. I've spoken with our Public Works Forum and Sean Young often about the water cost, and unfortunately, because we know what type of system, we're going to do a freshwater flow-through system, which is much safer in my thought than a recirculation because then you're dealing with the DQ and chlorine and all types of things that we don't want to get into. You don't want kids drinking the water, and kids open their mouth, and we'll drink the water, my kids will. So, we're going to do a flow-through system, which also, the upfront costs are a lot less, but then the yearly costs are a little bit more than a recirculation system. But, for the size splash pad that we're looking at, it's a better, it's a better way to go, and also for safety reasons, I think it's a better way to go. Once we have a design, once it's bid out, then we'll know some of those water costs, and we'll have to budget for it. One of the things that happens with this grant is, it's on a one-to-two-year cycle. So, if we find out that we get it, which we would find out in December of this year, the funds wouldn't actually come through for another year, so we'll have time to budget, and we will have to put those extra dollars in.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Gavin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Understanding that the likelihood of getting both grants is pretty small, I'm assuming that there wouldn't be any issues with future applications for something like this if we had to reject one of them?
Nope. And the grant coordinator has assured me we will not get both, but she had said that even once you get to the project proposal and all of that, like even once you've been granted the money, you can always turn it back with no penalty, no repercussion, nothing like that. I have that all in writing, so I'm not concerned about that. It will either be none, which we're hopeful that's not the case, or a one.
Thank you.
Teresa, I know you and your staff certainly have put in a lot of work last year on these, on the grant, and certainly have done the same thing this year. It is unfortunate that we came up a few points shy, and for those of you that, you know, she mentioned a little bit on the process, there are a lot of things that we can't control. We can't just add extra points wherever we want, or we can't inflate things that are not true. There are some areas this year where we are able to hopefully acquire some more points. As she mentioned, potentially 10 to 20, and then it depends on if they keep the same number. They could say, nope, now it's 340 points this year. So, there's a lot of things that we cannot control, but I know the Parks and Rec Department, I mean, Mr. Carlton, have done all they can to try to get us this grant. So, again, we will, and we actually got, last year, thought we had it, and then a week later, it's held us up. Sorry, you didn't have it. So, we will apply again. Thank you for your persistence and hard work, and the rest of your staff as well on this. With that, Ms. Blanchard, would you please call the roll on R0918?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrant?
Yes. Ms. Blanchard, would you please read the next item on tonight's agenda?
Resolution Number R1018, matter of authorizing the Parks and Recreation Department to apply for the 2018 Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund Grant for Park Improvements at Oxford Merchant's Park.
Is there a motion to approve R1018?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Stedman, with support from Councilmember Blanchard.
So, hello again. So, nice to see you. You know, I'll repeat or ditto. Again, the resolutions read exactly the same. They're dual applications. There's little changes that each one needs, but really, the fortunate thing is a lot of the language can remain the same. And like I said, we're, I think we're going to get a couple extra points this year, about 20, and thank you for mentioning that, Mayor. The target is a moving target. Sometimes the low score is 350, sometimes it's 330, sometimes, and then the MDR has priority, or the MNRTF has priority projects. So, they funded $19 million last year. We came in somewhere around 15, but they had priority projects. So, we're hopeful that this goes through this year and that, you know, we're grateful, I'm grateful to you. We do, it does require two resolutions, so I'm grateful to council for understanding that.
Addition, additional questions or? Ms. Carlton? Okay. Thank you, Teresa. With that, Ms. Blanchard, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrant?
Yes.
Ms. Blanchard, would you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M1918, matter of authorizing the Knights of Columbus, 2299 West 12 Mile Road, Berkeley, Michigan, to conduct a Tootsie Roll Drive in the city of Berkeley, beginning Friday, March 23, 2018, and ends on Sunday, March 25, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. During these days, representatives of the Knights of Columbus will wear reflective vests and collect money.
Is there a motion to approve M1918?
Move to approve.
By Councilmember Gavin, with support by Councilmember Stedman. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Knights of Columbus will be, they have applied for. Their application is full or is in good standing. It's been reviewed again by our Public Safety Department, as well as Public Works. They look at it as well. There's, it's mostly complete. I believe there was a pending item. Was there, they were good, but they're...
No, they're, they're good.
They're all set. The, they'll be soliciting at 11 Mile and Coolidge, as well as 11 Mile and 12 Mile, or Coolidge and 12 Mile. There was some question about, specifically to the Coolidge and 11 Mile. They'd be staying on the Berkeley side, and so, there's, we'll be the only ones, it'll be a strictly a Berkeley event. These are the, our own Knights of Columbus, so there's not, this does not proceed now to any of the other cities or road commission on this particular item. As indicated, they'll be in reflective vests, but we do ask any pedestrians or any motorists to be on the lookout, you know, Friday, March 23 through Sunday, March 25. Just be on the lookout, keep these gentlemen safe. They're collecting for a very noble cause, and those that donate get a Tootsie Roll, as indicated. We have not had any issues with Knights of Columbus any time that they've done this. They've been a great partner. They're very conscientious, and they ask for approval.
Thank you. Okay.
That's good stuff.
Questions, comments? Everything seems to be in order?
Everything seems to be in order. I would like to make a comment that the, that the applications that are coming in now are better than, we're getting more information. In the past, we've had some problems with whether they 501(c)(3) or what, antitax exempt status, but now the information we're getting is better. The only thing wrong with this one is the fact that they put no under the cost for this thing, and they're giving away Tootsie Rolls. They get them for free.
I've been told that nothing is free.
No big deal, but they, they marked that there was no cost to the solicitation, so...
Okay.
I will note, this Councilmember Annette and her staff have, have been very thorough in reviewing these documents and enforcing a hard deadline so that we have the chance to take a look at this before it comes before this body. So, the appropriate kudos goes to the clerk's office.
We appreciate that. Thank you, Annette and your team, because there were a number of times where we had the same things missing or elapsed or expired, and we have had a lot less of that recently. So, thank you. Seeing no other comments, Ms. Blanchard, would you please call the roll on M1918?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrant?
Yes. M1918 has been approved. Ms. Blanchard, would you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M2018, matter of approving application for waiver and plan retirement health benefit systems to Michigan Department of Treasury.
Is there a motion to approve M2018?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Henan. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where to start? I start beginning, the, over the course of 2017, the legislature's been discussing the issue affecting many, many municipalities across the state of Michigan, but the long-term costs of retiring, of retirees specific to pension and their healthcare obligations. Many municipalities across the state struggle with these. It's something that's getting more and more press over the last couple of years, I think. to the municipalities as more of a fact-finding mission. Municipal League really referred to it as a missed opportunity there, but they did come up with PA-202. PA-202 required municipalities to, within six months of their end of their fiscal year, complete a form created by the Treasury Department and reporting different aspects of our funding ratio for our pension plan as well as our retiree healthcare plans. They created what they call "triggers." And so for a pension plan, the funding ratio would have had to have been less than 60% and your annual required contribution divided by your governmental funds would have to be greater than 10%. On the retiree healthcare side, that number has to be above 40, and then the second portion has to be lower than 12%. When Berkeley did the appropriate calculations, we found that our pension system was well above their trigger. We were in a good funding position compared on the ARC side. We were under the 60% for our pension system administered by MERS. But on the retiree healthcare side, their minimum threshold on the second portion requiring to be greater than 12%, we ended up at 12.1%. So we, on paper, did trigger. Now, at this point, our next steps are to apply for a waiver, and that waiver comes with the requirement of showing the legislature, or showing the Treasury, for the legislature via the Treasury, I guess most appropriately, that we are not in, should not be in a trigger status. We are not in a crisis situation. We do have a plan for addressing these items, and that plan, as well as the waiver document, is included in your packet. Generally speaking, applaud the legislature for at least trying to get their hands around this issue, because as I said, it does face many Michigan municipalities. But they're... I think the polite way of saying this is it's being very hastily done. So we now have 45 days to apply, as does 110 other Michigan municipalities who likewise came up with, had something trigger between one of their two plans. Anybody that wants information on Berkeley's status or Berkeley's funding levels, if you look to the city's annual comprehensive financial report, our CAFER, which is posted on our website, you can look through, and it really does a good job of... Actually, I'll tell you how good a job in a minute. It really does a good job of reporting the city's financials. Note 13 actually discusses our OPEB obligations. That's going to be found on page 57. So we are very open, very transparent about this issue. We've utilized a pay-as-you-go system where we don't pre-fund a lot of this obligation, but each year we pay both the actives and the retiree premiums month to month. It's a system that's worked very well for the city, but again, we ended up just .1 percentage point above where the legislature would have liked to have seen most cities. So long explanation to say, what you have before you is going to go to Treasury. Treasury will review our waiver document as well as the plans, and they will be getting back to us on a timeline yet to be determined, but applying early helps us dialogue with them. And then we'll see if they either grant the waiver and will continue to kind of dialogue with them, or there needs to be a reduction plan in place submitted thereafter, and we'll be working with our acting finance director on that if need be. A lot of this is detailed in a memo in your packet. Hopefully, it provided the appropriate background information.
So you noted the CAFER and where this information can be found. Why was it that this information was not brought up in our most recent audit when Plant Moran was here?
Plant Moran did note it. Like I said, it is in Note 13. But generally speaking, our auditors have no issue with a pay-as-you-go system. They've always advocated that we try to put a little bit of money back, and likewise, this body has invested some assets with our... It sounds kind of funny to say, but actually with the same organization that administers our retiree system, our pensions, we actually have monies invested with them to slated fund our OPEB costs if we ever need be. So we've accumulated 4.6 million in that pot for the future use if ever the pay-as-you-go system becomes onerous to us. Thankfully, it has not yet. But they've noted it. I think each year, they do advocate that we try to put more towards our pension system, but again, a pay-as-you-go funding policy, very common in the state of Michigan, and it's one that's not been overly burdensome, given the city's revenues.
Right, and I know that it has been noted, and there are a number of notes. We've had a number of reports from Plant Moran. We have unqualified audits. And outside of the slide where we always talk about our unfunded liabilities down the road, which we are aware of and we are funding, it was never a point of serious concern for Plant Moran. It was never more than just a note that was brought up. It's some changes that have obviously brought this to our attention, like you said, and it's something that the city takes into concern every year when we are looking at our budget, and we will be doing that again in May of this year, when we go line by line and decide to which of the GASPys we are going to decide to fund and to which level we are going to be able to fund each of the different GASPy regulations that come down that impact our OPEB or other post-employment benefits. So it is something that is on our radar. This change is something that we were, as you mentioned, funding. A little bit of a change in how we're accounting things has brought us into a position where we need a waiver at this point, and we will look to increase that 12.1 up to a number that gets us out of that. It is... You mentioned at the beginning, but it is important to note that there are a number of other categories where we are certainly funding and are not in any position, just as it relates to the healthcare issue, where we were right on the line. So again, the state has drawn the number 12. We are right about there, so it's not like we are in dire straits. We're not at 4, 3%, and they said 12. We are at about the number they want us to be. We just would like to be a little bit higher to make sure that we do not have to have any waivers, and we continue to honor our promises, and we will certainly continue to do that. And the pay-as-you-go system has been efficient and effective for us, but we need to, again, continue to keep a close eye on what we're doing and how we are funding our legacy costs. Additional comments from the City Council? Councilmember Blanchard?
Technical question. On section three of the waiver description of prior actions, category of prior action system design changes, there's a checkbox checked there and is filled out. Down below that, there is an additional funding checkbox that's not checked, but there are additional funding comments in that section. I just wondered if that checkbox on the bottom of page two is supposed to be checked or not?
That number came up, or that same question came up earlier as well. The notation in the additional funding section indicates that we do have the 4.6 million invested with MERS. That number was actually used in the calculation to get us to 17%. And so our question to Treasury will be, is that an appropriate use of that space, given that those monies have already been indicated elsewhere?
This is a new form, nobody knows.
Right, this is the very first year doing it, so Treasury's only a couple of months in.
I'll check. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Henon?
Are we taking any steps to prepare in case we aren't granted the waiver?
Yes, yes, we are. In fact, we're working with our acting finance director is here. As you know, we've entered into agreement with UHY to sort of pinch-hit for us. So not only do we have our acting finance director on it, but he's utilizing the resources of his firm, both legal and otherwise, legal, accounting, the financial side, using their expertise in order to at least outline a plan for us. Granted, we hope we don't need it, but I don't want to be left scrambling if it should come up, so we're actually pre-working on that.
Thank you. As the city manager mentioned, we are certainly not alone in this new process in requiring a waiver, as many of our neighbors are doing the same thing. That is not to say that we're not taking this seriously. We certainly are, and we understand where the numbers are and what the thresholds are, and it will be something that is very carefully talked about and thought about when it comes to our budget this year and how we are going to continue to fund our liability costs. With that, Ms. Boucher, is there... Would you please call the roll? Sorry.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number nine on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-1118, matter of authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute an agreement with the Berkeley School District to collect and remit their July 2018 property tax levy.
Is there a motion to approve R-1118?
Motion to approve.
Approved by Councilmember Stedman with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As per state statute, we have to enter into an agreement with the city council, or between the city council as well as the school district to collect property taxes on their behalf. The question was raised on whether or not we could charge for this service. State law does not provide an avenue for that. Likewise, we collect for the DIA, the zoo, SMART, Oakland County, and any number of other taxing entities. So as a matter of convenience, and for a taxpayer to have a single point in order to make those payments, the local municipalities are the lucky collector of those items. But it is, it's worth referencing that the money that you pay in your tax bill, that whole number does not flow directly to this municipality. But in fact, we are, like I say, we're a one-stop shop. So if you look to your tax bill, you'll see items detailed on there, and you can get a sense of where that one check that you write gets divided out and gets sent to many different worthwhile organizations. So this is just one of those.
Thank you. This is something that we see, obviously, every year. Mr. Gallagher very eloquently writes a letter asking for them to access the money that we have collected for them. We do continue to have a very strong relationship with our school district as well. The school district is working with us on a number of things and helping us out, so even if the state allowed us to charge them to collect this, I'm not so inclined that I would be in favor of charging them for this, given our relationship and the reciprocal relationship that we have, especially since they do not have the ability to collect this without us. So with that, are there any questions, comments? Okay, Ms. Boucher, are the schools going to get their money? Please call the roll.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the next item on tonight's agenda? Which is item number 10.
Motion number M-2118, matter of approving a one-year contract extension of the 2015 to 2018 bargaining agreement between the city of Berkeley and the Berkeley Public Safety Officers Association, PBSOA.
Is there a motion to approve M-2118?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Support.
Support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner, what are the next two items about?
One covers the patrol division of the labor union, the other one covers the command division of the labor union. So this is our scheduled... This year was our scheduled time to sit down with the unions and discuss reopening the contract and entering into another probably three-year terms, going through each of these items, seeing what we need to change, what we don't. Ultimately, after sitting down with them and sort of comparing some of the goals that we each had, the city opted to simply offer an extension at a wage rate similar to what our comparable communities are likewise offering, and then throwing in there the option of just extending the city's existing policy of being an opt-out community in regards to PA-152, an action that was recently taken by city council, I think at the end of last year. So both sides were very amenable to it. It gave us, again, gave us the ability to go out 12 months, extend its current contract, and we look forward to sitting down in 2019. The police union's been a fantastic partner. They've worked with us in so many regards. They do a very good job, that we're excited that we're able to come to such a quick and simple resolution in this year, and look forward to work with them in the next year.
Thank you. Comments from council?
This is... Excuse me.
Councilmember Blanchard?
This is effective July 1st?
Yes, sir.
Additional comments? Questions? Okay, thank you. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 11 on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-2218, matter of approving a one-year contract extension of the 2015 to 2018 bargaining agreement between the city of Berkeley and the Berkeley Public Safety Command Officers Association, PSCOA.
Is there a motion to approve M-2218?
Motion to approve.
By Councilmember Blanchard?
Support.
Support from Mayor Protem Baker. Mr. Baumgartner?
Essentially the same thing twice over. The first section, the first portion that you just approved was specific to the patrol officers themselves. This one covers sergeants and lieutenants.
Okay. Like you said before, we are very pleased with the process. The union's working with us, and we will reopen these in a year when it comes time to negotiate again, but being able to continue under this agreement hopefully is, benefits both parties in mutual agreement. So we're very happy to have this for discussion. Are there additional comments from council? There weren't on the last one, I doubt there are on this one, but we want to make sure that we have approved everything correctly. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you. M-2218 has been approved. We have now come to the communications portion of our evening. Ms. Boucher, I was not paying attention. Who was up first?
Blanchard.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you. Just a couple of things tonight. Spring break for our schools starts April 1st, so there'll be kids running around in the streets again. It's like the summer, so be careful driving out there. We don't have any accidents. Again, severe weather awareness week will be April 8th to the 14th, with the weather warning cymbal sounding on April 11th at 1:00. So it'll be different than normal, so let your people know. The next SkyWarn training will be Saturday at Oakland County Homeland Security Division, Building 41 West, 2100 Pontiac Lake Road in Waterford. There's two sessions up there, 10:00 to 11:30, and 1:00 to 2:30, if anybody wants to be certified in SkyWarn. And on Monday, the 27th, the classes will be held at Southfield Public Library from 7:00 to 8:30. So again, that's for the SkyWarn. We have put some of the brochures on the table that are available in city buildings that talk about severe weather awareness week and how to prepare. There's examples there, and they are at the library here in this building, or at DPW and at Parks and Rec. So if anybody needs anything, they can pick them up there. So, thank you.
Councilmember Stedman?
Please be sure you check online with all of the various programs that the library offers right now. They offer many of them, so check for the rest of March and all of April. There's like too many to read off. And also, the beautification committee has a couple of things coming up, and the dates... I'll give you the firm dates in one of the April city council meetings, but one of them, we're going to be distributing flyers for trees, you know, to see who... They'll go around and canvas places that do not have a tree in their easement and leave a flyer for them, reminding them that there's a tree program in Berkeley. And the other date is cleaning up the bus stop areas that they've put planters in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of quick things. First, from the historical committee, two updates. They're working on a major display for the Roseland Park Cemetery. It's going to be really elaborate, so stay tuned for more information on that. That is well over 100 years old now, the cemetery, and so it's neat to see the history that they have to share. Second project is a collaborative effort with the historical committees throughout Oakland County, including Pontiac, Royal Oak, Rochester, and so many more. They're creating a video on the famous Reverend John Montyeth expedition of 1818. I'm sure you already know all about it, but the video is going to help clarify any missing details that you might have escaped. But no, that was the group that did the survey of most of Oakland County and mapped out the water and the land and all that kind of cool stuff. They have extensive notes on the rivers, creeks, swamps, trees, and so much more. And there'll be a special program, and we're going to have speakers and stuff like that, so that's underway as well, which is super cool. From the Downtown Development Authority, DDA, perspective, this week's Thursday, coming up in a couple of days, from 5:00 to 9:00 is the first Ladies' Night Out of the season, and we have a record 25 businesses that are participating in the Ladies' Night Out this time around. So if that is something that works for you, I hope you get out and enjoy it. Should be a lot of fun, 5:00 to 9:00 on Thursday. Quick update to our Main Streets of Oakland County application that we recently processed. We're actually going for the select level, which is the highest level within the program. So that's kind of neat, something that reflects the caliber of our downtown and brings us the kinds of assets and support that we need and deserve, which is super awesome. Coming up just down the road for us here, May 11th, so we'll reminder, coming up again in a couple of sessions here, May 11th is the kickoff for the Arts and About, which will involve doing some artistic painting on the crosswalks and some other kinds of things along Coolidge, and some really neat activities both on Coolidge and 12 Mile. And for more information on that, downtownberkeley.com is the place to go. And finally, it was Booker T. Washington who once said, "Those who are happiest are those who do the most for others." Again, that's those who are happiest are those who do the most for others. And I want to welcome Bridgette to the family here and to the team, and echo some of the comments that were made earlier, to thank all of the volunteers who are a part of the process, who have raised their hand to show their support, to give of their time and their energy, their creativity, and their skills. This city wouldn't be what it is today without all of the great volunteers, and we got a bunch more of them today, and thank you for all of your service to help make Berkeley great.
Thank you. Councilmember Dean?
I just want to reiterate how grateful I am to have received this appointment. I look forward to serving the citizens of Berkeley and being a good steward of our resources. look forward to serving the citizens of Berkeley and being a good steward of our resources. I'm excited for the Capitol Conference in Lansing the next couple of days. I know that I'm going to be learning a lot, and hopefully bringing back good, good information to put to use. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmember Henon?
Yes. Want to talk about the Tree Board, welcome our newest members, Kathy and Kim, and thank them for joining. The Tree Board's busy preparing for Arbor Day. They will be holding a free tree raffle. Several of the board members have donated a tree. It's free to enter, and entries are available at City Hall, at the library, and Parks and Rec, or online at bit.ly/berkleytreeraffle, and that's all lowercase, bit.ly/berkleytreeraffle. And the deadline to enter is April 18th. On Saturday, the 21st, they're going to have a tree planting in one of the city parks, one yet to be determined, at around 11:00 a.m. That coincides with the Park and Recreation's cleanup day, and during that event is when they'll also make the drawing for the winner of the tree raffle. They've acquired, it's an Arbor Day Charlie Brown, and it'll be available very soon. It's not there quite yet, but in the next few days, it'll be available at the library. And also, at the library in the month of April, will be an exhibit there with the benefits of trees. And the next meeting they have is on April 9th at 7:00 p.m. and at the library. The Environmental Advisory Committee meets this Thursday at 6:30 at the Public Safety Building. And I'll be holding my next talk with Dennis on Monday, March 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the library. Come and go as you want. You know, I'll be there to answer questions that you have or listen to your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Just a couple of quick things. The Coolidge Task Force met recently, and at the time, we're talking about the now-active left-turn lane at 11 Mile in Coolidge. And the fact that it, at that time is anyway going to become operational as of tomorrow, but obviously, we're good there. So, a couple of quick things that the task force is waiting on are a couple of traffic studies, one from the TIA Traffic Study, and then also, the Beaumont Traffic Study is still not completed at this point, to kind of find out what impact that's going to have coming down Coolidge. So, that was Coolidge, and then, or the task force, and then the Planning Commission actually will meet next Tuesday, the 27th, at 7:30 here at City Hall. And then, finally, I'd like to echo Mayor Protem Baker's comments on welcoming Bridgette. Very excited to have you, and of course, the thanks for everyone that put in and continues to volunteer their time throughout the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick updates for you, and then a long one. Want to start out with some, some very good news. Once again, the city has won a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. We've got such a long history with this award now that I'm not even sure I could tell you how many years it's coming. It's, we've received it now, but this is specific to the document I referenced earlier, our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFER. We were applauded in the way that we lay out this information, the ease at which it is to, to read and understand, as well as how forthcoming we are in putting forth that information. I want to thank specifically Lori Fielder, as well as Sue Redden in our office, in our finance office. As you know, we, we continue to look for a permanent finance director, and we've got a fantastic acting one, but in the midst of this transition, those two fantastic professionals, again, got us all the awards and all the information needed to, to once again lock up, you know, an achievement of excellence from the, this is the Governmental Finance Officers Association. So, this is a national award that has been offered to the City of Berkeley. So, major kudos to the, to the finance staff on that. Want to also bring up that, thank you for those that attended the city's most recent open house, specific to City Hall. That was last Thursday. Actually, it's always good to bring in chairs. We had a great group, fantastic discussion, wide-ranging discussion, what an appropriate city hall would be. We even had some surprises. We had, you know, some advocates for going a step beyond and what's, we've been demoing so far. So, very robust conversation, great dialogue. It's wonderful to hear from so many different points of view. Next step would be to continue to solicit feedback. Those items that, those that attended left some questions behind and some comments behind that we've been able to use to continue to improve our Frequently Asked Questions document. That can be found easily on our website. And then, the next item, next one that we'll have, is going to be our April 17th meeting. It's about the community center. It's at the community center. It'll be at 6:30, and we'll go through some of the details on the proposal that we're putting forth to the voters in November. So, excited about that, and certainly more information to come. The last item is going to be a little bit more intensive. We've been having a lot of conversation about infrastructure in the city of Berkeley, specifically our water infrastructure, not just with the water distribution system, our mains, but also, what do we do with the water that either flows in the city, falls on the city, or gets flushed out of the city. We're not the only ones talking about this, as we've been saying. This is a state discussion, a national discussion, a regional discussion, as well as our own. But, right now, the SEMCOG, which is Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, which covers just that, all of Southeast Michigan, they've got a water resource plan that's out for public comment. It's a rather robust document, it's 141 pages, but they dedicate two full chapters to the same issues that the City of Berkeley is, is trying to overcome now as well. Chapter four is devoted entirely to infrastructure, and they even have a subset case study on the George W. Kuhn Drainage System, which, as you know, is where all of City of Berkeley's combined sewer flows end up. And so, they talk about that specifically, and then, there's also an Integrated Water Resource Management chapter, which talks specifically about climate resiliency, which has been one of our big focuses and one of our topics of study on the report that ultimately is going to culminate hopefully next month. So, as I said, it, it talks about the public education on it, possible partnerships and collaboration, combined sewer infrastructure. And so, we've been working on, we're going to transmit to SEMCOG what we've been working on and make sure they've got, they're up to date on the, what City of Berkeley focuses, but likewise, taking some of the information that they've provided and make our documentation more robust as well. So, this is, again, this is City of Berkeley, leading on not just a local level, but a regional level, and working with SEMCOG on trying to make their plans better, and then utilizing those outside resources to try to make our plan better as well. So, we're excited about this. Excited to see that the state's 21st Century Infrastructure Committee, the work that that group did is not sitting on a shelf, at least not in Metro Detroit, it's not. And SEMCOG's done a, a great job of compiling next steps and real and actionable steps for communities within its footprint. So, happy to be in the forefront of that. Sorry for the long update.
No, it's, it's very important stuff. Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. That is certainly something that we are all focused on as councilmembers, but also as residents. We want to get as much information and be as much a part of the discussion as we possibly can. So, thank you for that update. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council, and welcome, Ms. Dean, to City Council. Within the last couple of months, and probably from time to time before that, I have spoken to council about the, what's going on in the wireless industry, and the approach of wireless telecommunications companies to the city of Berkeley and, and really, communities all, all around us throughout Oakland County, in a, in a, really, a new business model and an effort to expand and enhance wireless communications through installing small cell facilities and distributed antenna systems, and primarily within the public rights of way. It's been a concern, as certainly, communities are protective. We try to be protective of our rights of way. We know we've seen a lot of that authority eroded over the years through such things as the, the Metro Act, the Uniform Video Local Franchising Act, I think I got that right, and, and, and other similar efforts where state law has taken away what before had been exclusively local jurisdiction and discretion, and have basically paved the way, so to speak, for, for cable companies and for phone companies to come in. And you're probably going to be learning about this more in, in your Capitol Conference that you'll be attending this week, but it looks like it's happening to us again with regard to the small cell and DAS facilities. What these small cells are is, we're all familiar with cell towers. These are smaller, in some cases, not smaller in terms of their actual physical size, but they're called small cell because they have a smaller coverage area, as opposed to macro cells, which are the big giant ones that can cover an entire city. And the providers have been wanting to locate these within the rights of way, basically adding poles and facilities to our rights of way, and there's been a legislative effort to enable that to happen. And I'm speaking primarily of Senate Bill 637, which seems to have gained a lot of traction lately. It has already been approved by the Senate, is on its way to the House. From what I have been hearing and reading, it likely does have sufficient bipartisan support to be passed and enacted by our state legislature and signed into law by our governor. And what this Senate bill would do is create what's going to be called the Small Wireless Communications Facilities Deployment Act, which, you know, as I mentioned, will be a, a means by which the companies will be able to come in and basically have an entitlement to locate within our, our rights of way. Initially, this bill was strongly opposed by the Michigan Municipal League, as well as the Protec Group, which the City of Berkeley became a member within the last year. My understanding is that MML has withdrawn its opposition and is now taking a neutral position, primarily because although the initial version, as, as introduced, the bill was very harsh, shall we say, toward municipalities. There have been some protections that have been added in that have caused the Michigan Municipal League to withdraw its, its opposition, although Protec is still very, very much against it. The protections I'm talking about is, although it would allow these intrusions into the public rights of way, as currently proposed, there would be a hard cap on the height of the utility poles that they could, could put in, a hard cap of 40 feet, which is roughly the size of a standard utility pole. They generally go 30, 35 to 40 feet. That's pretty important, because some of these small cell facilities are going as high as 120 feet in some communities, which, of course, is above most of the, you know, the tree canopy, which is the whole idea why they're that high. There are a few other protections, but among the things that it will, will do, aside from limiting our ability to keep them out, it's also going to allow virtually free rein to, for companies to utilize existing utility poles and to put a whole bunch of antennas on them, up to, I think they can have up to four antenna per pole, and each antenna array can be up to six cubic feet, which somebody explained to me, that's about the size of a refrigerator. So, you know, we could start seeing a lot of clutter in our, our rights of way on existing poles, as well as some new poles. It's also going to dictate how much we can charge for, for these, again, much like the Metro Act and the Uniform Video Act. So, it's coming, and you'll probably learn more about it. I'm sorry for, for rambling on, but this is a subject we've visited before, and we do have some of these companies that have already made approaches to the, to the city. So, before you know it, you may see some of these licenses or permits under this, this statute, which I'm forecasting will likely be enacted and signed into law sometime this year.
Thank you for that.
Any bearer of good news.
You mentioned these companies may be, you know, entitled. They're, they're already entitled. They already come in and kind of do whatever they want, which we're seeing right now in at least the southwest corner of our city. I know Councilmember Blanchard has been doing some, some recon work as well, but we've already seen, this is a little different scale that you're talking about versus what's happening right now, but they don't have to tell the city what's happening.
Most communities have seen some of these things pop up, and they can go undetected, because we're all used to driving around, and you see trucks and workers, and you just go, well, you know, I guess they do those things, and nobody asks questions. And, you know, sometimes they're just going out there and, and throwing these things up when they really should be coming to us and, and seeking the appropriate permits.
Yeah. Councilmember Blanchard, do you have something?
I'd like to make an addition on that, too. If you remember, a few weeks back, we passed a law ordinance saying that we could hire outside consultants and charge them back to the permit holders. There is a statement in this law, this regulation, whatever you want to call it, Senate bill, that says we cannot expressly forbid us from doing that.
No, of course not.
So, if we, they come in, and they can come in 20 at a time, these permits. They can lump 20 construction sites into one permit. And we have 45 days to either approve it or disapprove it, and if we need outside engineering help to review it, we got to chen, chen the cost. We cannot charge the cost back to them.
And if we don't approve it?
They win anyway.
We don't approve it, they will go to the Michigan Public Service Commission, which will approve it.
Right. So, sweet. Thank you. Okay, is that it? Any other lightning news for us?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. I, too, want to welcome Councilmember Dean. The council has done a tremendous job today of going through my, my bullet lists here. If you haven't seen the left turn lanes, or left turn lights, I should say, at Coolidge and 11 Mile, they're there and functional. They are left turns before the rest of traffic, so don't, don't, you know, try to get into the lane at the end. We will be heading to Lansing, the council, and the city manager will be heading to Lansing for the Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference. Certainly plan on finding out more about the Senate bill that you mentioned, but there are also a number of action items. It's a great opportunity for, one, for us to certainly learn and to be able to attend breakout sessions in MML, but also to network with our peers in neighboring communities and, you know, hear about what's happening there. And then, a lot of times, those conversations will turn out one of two ways. One, oh, you've heard about Berkeley, and there's a lot of great things happening in Berkeley. We get that frequently. But also, that they are experiencing the same concerns we are when it comes to infrastructure, and not just municipal infrastructure, but also state infrastructure as well. So, we will have an opportunity to, I suppose, commiserate on those, but also to see what other communities are doing, and what other ways we can work with our residents. So, always looking for best practices. So, certainly excited for that over the next couple of days. And I do want to put another plug for volunteers for the new, not new, but the revived Communications Committee. We have one member, the only member of that committee is actually with us today. Assuming she wants to continue serving, then we would be up to two members of that committee, but we need to get five. And again, we, we want to get the group together, a full board together, so that we can begin the process, working with our communications coordinator on the new vision and mission of this committee, and how this commu, committee can engage with the residents and kind of, you know, be a sounding board for residents, with residents, what's working, what's not working, what are some potential ideas, what are residents looking for, how can we do a better job of communicating, leveraging all of the different ways that we have to communicate today, but also not just relying on, on online communication. That's, that's something that we, that there's still a number of folks who are not seeking out communication through the internet. So, we have to make sure that we're continuing to communicate with everybody. So, again, another plug for that. We have wonderful volunteers. I know it seems like we are always asking for volunteers, but as was mentioned before, we would not be able to do the things that we do in the city without our volunteers. So, thank you, and I look forward to getting that board back up and running. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support. Councilmember Henon, I thought Councilmember Dean was going to try to get in there and say, this is enough, I got enough, adjourn this thing. But thank you, Councilmember Henon. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. The Monday, March 19th, regular meeting of the City Council has been adjourned.